All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Burwick Planning Board meeting. This is a meeting, a regular meeting for Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What'd she say?
Hold on, something went down, maybe? We're back on, we're back.
Okay, can you guys hear me? Frank, David, Mike, Jen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, introduction of board members. In the, in the Town Hall tonight, we have Jerry here, he's our alternate member. We've got Frank, he's our regular member. We've got Dave, and we've also got Mike. So we have a full board here tonight. We've also got our Code Enforcement Officer Jennifer, and we've got our Town Planner, James Belissimo here. Moving on to public comment, public comments open to any resident or property owner in the town of Burwick to talk about anything that relates to the planning board. Please feel free to come forward and, and speak.
Okay, Allison Graybill, resident at 10 Burwick. And I read the packet for tonight in regards to the land use ordinance, and I noticed that something that was proposed for the public hearing and for the 16th meeting wasn't included in tonight's packet. So I didn't know if that was intentional, or if it was an oversight. But I wanted to bring it to people's attention because I really am strongly in support of adding this, and just asked the board to consider that. So what this is in relation to is the 8.25.3 location. And so the old ordinance read marijuana establishments are allowed in, in the R3 zone only on properties which have frontage on Route 9 or Route 4. But what was being proposed in the July meeting was that the RC1 zone be added to that, so that marijuana establishments could only be located along Route 4 or Route 9 in the RCI and R3. So, I don't know if this is a back and forth, but I'm hoping the board will put that back in, especially in light of what happened at 11 Pond Road. I think it's a good recommendation.
James, you got that?
Yep.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Graybill.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if that was an oversight, or if it was included for the thing that's in January, but I'll double check. It might be an oversight, but it should be on there.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Anybody in the waiting room for public comment?
Yep, I have Mr. Emery here, who's a borough property owner, and Zach Holt. And if you don't mind, they can discuss, they have a warehouse off Blackberry Hill Road. And as of right now, the, the type of use that they'd like to do is not allowed. And I think it's, it's a good discussion to have whether we should look at amending our ordinance to allow these types of commercial uses in that zone.
All right, so it's Glenn and Zach.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Okay, so Glenn, could you please state your address or your name and address for the record? And then Zach, after you.
Okay, Glenn Emery. The property we're discussing is 175 Blackberry Hill Road, and I reside at 187 Blackberry Hill Road.
Zachariah Holt. I, my name's Zachariah Holt. I reside at 1 Hales Road in Cape Natick, Maine.
All right, Glenn, go ahead.
Well, I currently own what's in a current-use commercial property where grandfathered back into the 60s, well before any zoning was in place. And I'm in the process of getting ready to retire, and would like to find some way to make some income out of those buildings. I've been warehousing there since 1983. And, so I mean, it is in current use. And while Zach is looking to rent a part of the property, to do some warehousing, granted, it's on a different scale, but to be honest, it would be a lot less traffic for what he's trying to do as opposed to what I was doing for the last 38 years.
Where exactly is your property on Blackberry? Because I'm trying to, like, visualize this.
I'm, well, I'm a mile and a half in from Route 236. And it's, I don't know, not sure if you're familiar with the Blackberry Hill Farm?
Yep.
Okay, it's directly across the street from that. That was my grandparents' property. Our farm was on the other side. And this, these buildings were built as a retail farm equipment dealership originally back in the 60s, right beside the farm.
Okay, and what are you asking for again?
Zach is just looking to do some warehousing and storage in part of one of my buildings.
Yeah, which, it's not allowed. I think warehousing and storage, in the historical sense, back when the zoning was put in, I think you imagine it being heavy trucks, which is part of the why. There's a lot of little language that I've been putting in to accommodate this type of use. And this is just a proposal, it's a total draft, just to get this discussion going for the board. And I, if it's okay with the chair, have Zach discuss it a little bit. Because I think what we could be looking at is creating this new definition, an allowance for kind of a low impact, kind of like we have a low-impact manufacturing. It's, it's definitely a different scale from what, I mean, what's not allowed there.
All right, so Zach, we'll turn it over to you, if you can unmute him. What are you looking to put in there?
So the type of business that I currently operate is a pharmaceutical drug discovery business. We sell compounds for screening purposes into companies such as Pfizer, Moderna, large pharmaceutical companies. So what these are, is these are small pack sizes of 1 gram units, which pharmaceutical companies use for further testing. The logistics of the, the site is quite basic in the sense that there's potentially one delivery a day coming in, one outbound delivery every day, which is FedEx and UPS. As it starts small, you know, typically, we, we drive to UPS and FedEx. But once we scale these, they, they tend to have a UPS and FedEx delivery for us, or a truck that just drops off. They tend to be small sizes and employees, less than, less than five employees. The amount of compounds I currently house out in San Diego, California, 17,000 compounds. These are non-hazardous, non-regulated. These are not flammable. These are not corrosive. They're basically pharmaceutical salts for drug discovery. And the logistics company that we've created is a company that does fulfillment and distribution for pharmaceutical companies in their screening libraries. So they basically let us hold on to their inventory. They tell us when they want that inventory. We package it up and ship it to them via FedEx and UPS. That's probably the 35,000-foot view.
Okay, Mr. Emery, can you please keep in touch with James here in the planning office? And we'd like to, you know, maybe walk around the property, talk a little bit more about this. But we're not going to be acting on any of this this evening.
Okay.
Yeah, this is something that we have to, I, you know, I'm, I'm speaking for the board, but you know, if anybody else wants to jump in there, this is something that was thrown at us last minute. There's a lot of variables that come out here with this. If anybody wants to jump in here and, you know, either, you know, disagree with me, that's fine. Or, you know, I just think that there's, there's a reason that Blackberry Hill Road is, is meant for that kind of zoning. It's, it's farmland. It's not Route 4. It's not Route 9. So this is something that we could look into, you know, next month.
Well, what Zach, what Zach is trying to do is a lot lower impact than what I've been doing for the last 38 years. Like I said, my work involved tractor-trailer trucks and flatbeds and all kinds of traffic.
Which is, you know, which is, you know, part of farming too. But, you know, we're in a public comment session, and I'm glad that you guys came in here. And you're on the radar for the planning board right now. Please keep in touch with James. And keep talking to James, and we'll see if we can work something out and come out there, look at the property, and see what, you know, Zach wants to put out there, and see whether or not this is possible.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you.
Hey, hey, I thought you were going to ask questions, Dave.
You know, I thought about that, Frank, and I, I-
You said Frank, and I was ready.
Yeah, I know you were ready, and I'll, I'll go to you first next. But, you know, we're in a public comment session, so we probably shouldn't be having, like, a public hearing at this point. But I just-
That's fine. I, I'll wait until we get into that amendments discussion.
We just talk amongst ourselves.
Yeah, yep, yep, yep. I just liked, I just like to, like Mr. Emery to be on James's radar. And I know he's going to be talking to him and seeing, you know, if he can get on here for some type of conditional use, or, you know, some change to the land use ordinance. But at this point, this, that, that's it. This is public comment, so.
I would just like to say to Mr. Emery and Mr. Holt that I know what you're talking about, and I have the same concerns.
Okay, all right.
All right, anybody else for public comment in the waiting room?
Nope.
Okay, seeing nobody else come forward in the waiting rooms virtually or in Town Hall, we'll move on from public comment, moving to approval of minutes for the November 9th, 2020 meeting. Go ahead.
A misspelling on page three. Should be exempt instead of accepted. Board and staff discussed marijuana testing facilities and having to be exempted from the 1,000-foot radius instead of accepted, I think, is what.
Being grammatic, grammatically correct.
Yeah. I believe that's what we-
Did you guys hear that? Did you guys hear that? Frank, Dave, Mike?
Yeah, I heard it.
Okay.
I can hear.
Actually, your minutes were wrong, James. It's November 19th, 2020. It said November 9th. Anybody else? Frank?
I'm good.
David?
I was not actually at that meeting and will not be voting on the minutes.
Okay, Michael?
That's the same as me as well. I wasn't there last meeting.
Okay, Frank, you were there, right? Are you going to vote tonight?
Yeah, I've got to vote, yes.
Okay, Jerry? Okay. So we're looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the November 19th, 2020 meeting, as amended.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Jerry. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Frank. Further discussion? All in favor, Jerry?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And I vote yes? That's 3-0. Okay. All right, next is the June 2021 Land Use Ordinance Amendments. And we're diving right into these right now. We have plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
And we do not have to act on this tonight.
No, no, sir.
Okay, all right, so I already told Frank that he's first up because I, you know, unfortunately called on him first before preemptively. So Frank will go first, but first, I'm going to turn it over to James.
Sure. The, the first thing, I'll make a note and emphasize, we're ahead of the game here for once. The, the public hearing, our critical date is, would be February 4th. And then based off the public hearing, we have a couple of weeks to make final amendments for February 18th. So everything here, it's been pretty, you know, winter time can be pretty slower for the planning department. So now's the time to think about long-range planning things. So we've had time to get some ideas going, and a lot of these are, need to have standing with the comprehensive plan. I did invite a farmer to speak to the food sovereignty ordinance, and I, they're not here. So maybe next meeting, they can make an appearance. I have a host of, of changes. I have a memo here, but if Frank, if he's ready to go to talk about-
Okay, go on your memo.
I'll go down my memo.
No, I, I just soon follow along, James and Dave, how you have it structured for this evening. If we're going to take each of those topics individually, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go down the memo. It's just an overview, and then we can go from there. So access to lots, Frank and I, we had a discussion with Jen. So nothing's changed from there. With marijuana, there's a couple of changes. Allison brought up a good point about 1,000-foot setbacks should apply to the same businesses if they're not on contiguous lots, to prevent that leapfrogging that, I mean, that's a real thing, and that's something that could happen. Mike, you tell, after I go through this, I, I reached out to Mike about the home occupation standards. One concern is if we're permitting these things, we want to have some handle on people getting permitted and just expanding paths of what they are legally allowed to do. And if there's new construction, or at least we know we're limiting them to some footprint. So that's the thought behind that. There's a series of bullet points on what Zach and Glenn with this warehousing thing, and these are the type of steps that would be required to allow that type of use. And again, the, the, the thought process behind this, and that's the reason why there's, on the memo, there is a, a chart of the distribution of residential to commercial. In our town comprehensive plan, it, you know, it says we should have a balance of residential and commercial. That balance has not changed in 30 years because all of these areas are basically residential zones with no commercial uses. So that's just a thing to think about. And to go along with the ordinance change, so to allow warehouses on collector streets. Collector streets are defined in the borough comprehensive plan. And those are your next-level streets down from Route 4, Route 9, that had Long Swamp, Cranberry Meadow. And part of the amendment you'll see is not allowing heavy trucks. One last thing on that, is if Zach was living at that property, he very well would have likely be approved for a home occupation business. Because that's, that's how low of a impact this use is. But because it's not his primary residence, he doesn't fall under that. So that's, on that piece. Impact fees, so we're trying to, with fees, with our town fees and with the sewer fees, we're always trying to evaluate where we're at to make sure that our fees make sense, especially in context with the downtown development. One thing to think about, we have open space, impact fees. We're also mandating open space downtown. It's kind of a double hit. Another piece of that impact fee amendment is having provisions in there. If the developer voluntarily says, hey, we're going to build this park, they can then go to the select board and they can say, hey, we put in $25,000. This is where impact fees were going anyways. That language came directly from, a lot of it was borrowed from Portland, Maine. They have those provisions in their impact fees. And the other ones were pretty, pretty minor, the ones that Nicole suggested as she went through. So person being deleted, agriculture, including any will. Well, and then 8.6 apartments just striking the, the specific screen requirements, and then just getting rid of the 50-foot buffer because the buffer would be taken up through subdivision anyways. So those, that's, that's, that's my rundown. And I see Liz is in the waiting room for the food sovereignty. Do you want to go to that?
Okay. That's actually first on some of our amendments, so. Hello, Liz, can you hear us? Liz, can you hear us? Oh, your mic's on you.
Hi.
Hi, Liz. Liz, what's your address? Do you own any property in Burwick?
I do. 152 Little River Road.
Okay, very good. All right, go ahead. Can you talk about some of these? You know, James wanted you to come on here and talk a little bit about this food sovereignty.
Food sovereignty, yeah, and I apologize for being, it sounds like I'm a little late to the party here. I thought the meeting started at 7:00. So excuse me for being slightly late. We have another guest joining us too, Jordan Pike of Two-Toed Farm. He should be in within the next five minutes or so. But I can at least start you off and let you know what it is. Food sovereignty started in Maine back in the early 1990s. And basically, what it does is it enables people who are interested in starting up from small farms to maybe baking or food processing. It allows them to start up at home and negates the need to have the federal and state regulations that come along with being able to sell the food products that you make, or that come right from your farm. So it's a way for people to legitimize and beta-test their products with friends and family in the community without having a lot of the startup costs that are involved, such as getting a commercial kitchen, or some of the other large equipment that's needed on farms and things to sell milk and things, things of that nature. Does that answer your question?
Yep, James, you want to start off with our amendments, starting off with one?
Sure, yeah, so the, the food sovereignty ordinance, the way that we have it, as of now, I just have in the packet, it's just the templates from Sanford. And it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward, where we would just replace Sanford with Burwick. And that, I don't see a need to adopt much more, but I would defer to Jordan and Liz to see what, yeah, I think that the enactment of it is referencing the actual state statute, and then embedding that as our own ordinance. So we do have, we do have Jordan here, if there's anything that-
Yeah, where is Jordan? There he is, okay. Got to put his mic on.
Yeah, you're muted, yep.
Jordan? I don't think he hears us.
Sometimes the host has the ability to unmute.
Unmute, here we go.
There we go. Hi, Jordan.
Hi, yeah, this is, sorry, folks, this is my first Zoom meeting ever, so you guys are breaking me in, so.
You're lucky. You're very lucky.
Yeah, I know. I'm going to have to come up the learning curve a bit with you folks. One of the things that I would encourage everybody to do is look at the Maine Food Sovereignty Act, LD795, because there's a lot of language there that's very pertinent to food sovereignty in Maine, and how Maine and Maine's legislature views food sovereignty and the inherent rights of individuals, municipalities. But also to look at the food sovereignty template, the template ordinance known as LFSKO, the Local Foods and Community Self-Governance Ordinance. That is the template that all of the, I think we're up to 75 municipalities in the state of Maine now that have passed some form of LFSKO that has started with. So it's pretty important to use those as a starting point. I have read Sanford's ordinance. Sanford's ordinance is referred to, for all of the folks who are part of initiating and starting, you know, starting and working hard on food sovereignty ordinance, as well as getting the Food Sovereignty Act passed. They think of Sanford's ordinance as very, it is very lackluster. It's not a good starting point overall. It really doesn't capture all of what food sovereignty aims to be. So I think it's really important to, to start with the template that is available to municipalities, and then pare it down from there. I know that's what we did in Lebanon. The Lebanon ordinance is also not 100%. I, I wish it had more in it. But the Lebanon ordinance is a pretty bulletproof ordinance from a legal standpoint. And the town of Lebanon worked really closely with the Maine Municipal Association, as well as myself and my partner, Mary Beth, at Two-Toed Farm, in order to craft it so that it really met the needs of the consumers who have, will, and should have the right to choose their food, and producers that would be producing food.
Okay, Frank, questions?
Oh, yeah, I, I had an opportunity to talk to James a little bit about this after our last meeting. And when I looked at the original one in our packet, which was the Sanford one, I said, that's very simple, very straightforward. I mean, the people that want to do this understand it. And all I wanted to know was where was it coming from? Were we inventing this, or were we finding that it was being put together in other communities, this, that, and the other? When I saw the second draft of it, which by then, we had changed Sanford to Burwick, but we added four more pages. I will tell you, I read all five pages of that, but I would have stopped after the first page and added, who's responsible for enforcing it, as the closing paragraph. I think that, I mean, Jordan has done a lot of work. I know this is his forte. He's right on, on the cusp of everything that we're trying to do from a sustainability and this, that, and the other. But I don't think people in Burwick are going to read that literature, all four pages of the legalese and whatever else. Strictly by reference of LD, and I'm glad you brought it up, Jay, Jordan, LD795 and the template and the LFSKO and this, that, and the other. We just have that in our files as backup, but I wouldn't want to see all of that language put in our ordinance, where we have been trying to spend a lot of time streamlining our ordinance to bring it in line where it is pretty simple and straightforward. I mean, if, if Lebanon has done due diligence on that, I'd like to look at Lebanon's. I mean, if Ja, if James could get ahold of that, work with Jordan and Jen, find out what that is, and that could be a simple global change, Lebanon to Burwick. I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's got the information in there that you think makes it very credible and meaning, and people will understand why we're doing it. And that's all I had on that. Oh, the other thing is, is that, um, am I under the, you know, body language, Dave? I can see you.
Oh, you can't.
And Jerry, I, I see that too. Come on. Am I under the impression that if we-
You set yourself up, Frank.
What's that?
You set yourself up.
All right, if, if we end up with something like a food hub, where people can come in and do cooking and this, that, and the other, I'm assuming that is all exempt from any of this stuff, and that that must come out under commercial kitchens in federal-
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I would, I would, I'm totally on board with that, yeah.
Okay, I am too. I just want to make sure. I understand this is the, the back kitchen, grandma's recipe kind of a thing.
Yep, yeah, yeah. David?
I actually, you know, the same with Frank. I quickly read through it. Let's just keep it as simple as possible, as simple- I, I actually, you know, the same with Frank. I quickly read through it. Let's just keep it as simple as possible, as simple to understand and as simple to enforce.
That's right.
Yep. Michael?
I'm in agreeance with both.
Okay, Jerry?
Same.
Yeah, same here. Um, can you reach out or Jennifer reach out to maybe Lebanon and kind of see what they're doing as well, but just keep it simple. Like Frank said, this does not open up like kitchens and things like outdoor kitchens and things like that. This is just very simple, so, um, all right, thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Liz, for coming on tonight and sharing with us. You guys started off in the right direction, started us off in the right direction.
Dave, one question, just for them, because they, they live this stuff. Does this, if a town has an ordinance such as this, I asked James the other day when I was talking with him. If a town has this kind of an ordinance, does it, make it available for us to qualify for any kinds of funding? Say for assistance for farmers markets or this along, I mean, maybe, maybe that's a question that this doesn't apply to, but, um, I was just wondering if there was a, a definite distinct benefit, to having this in our ordinance that allows us to secure and maybe some funding and moving some of our initiatives and sustainability forward.
It's a good point, Frank.
I can maybe speak a little bit to that. This is Jordan. Um, there's nothing that I know of specifically, that would qualify, kind of like, you know, in the main state, in, within the state. If you have a comprehensive plan, then you qualify for certain assistance. There's, there's no automatic qualification, but what it does do is make, you know, the town more attractive to farmers, farming businesses, homesteaders. People who have an interest in maybe starting a small local business and starting very small. And then being able to build a very small customer base. Kind of a earn while you learn type of scenario, so that when somebody is ready to maybe jump in with both feet and, and, and make that investment and build their commercial kitchen and ramp up and, and start a distribution. They already have a certain financial stability, uh, behind them, and that's a really important part of food sovereignty. One more thing that I would like to, to bring up is, some folks have talked a number of times about, uh, using the word enforcement. Enforcement, enforcement. It's very, a food sovereignty ordinance is very different in that it allow, it's, it's expressly allowing people to do something as opposed to, preventing people from doing things. Most ordinances prevent you from doing things and set limitations. Food sovereignty is, is pretty much the exact opposite. So food sovereignty is not something that is enforced. Everything that is already in place, our food, uh, regulatory system, state and federal, is already in place. So state and feds are already enforcing all of that. What food sovereignty does is puts the onus of responsibility on the individual and the individual producers, to, so that there is no particular enforcement, necessary on a municipal level. The enforcement already exists in state and federal. So that really takes a lot of effort away from the municipality. And we know what effort in municipality means. It means money. So it, it, it does not cost money, um, because there really is no enforcement. If that makes sense.
But if it's in our land use ordinance, uh, Jordan, be enforcing officer for that is our code officer. So, I mean, why had the question, say somebody goes out and picks wild mushrooms, cans them up and sells them and everybody comes down with some exotic disease, botulism or whatever. Is the town on the hook for any of that? It's in our ordinance. And how, how do we exempt the town from being subject to a liability that we have nothing to, that we can control in a, someone's back kitchen?
Right, yeah, it has absolutely zero effect on liability. Anybody who is producing food and selling it is still 100% liable as they, are if they have a, a piece of paper and they're doing it on a huge scale versus a small scale. And then I would refer you back to the, the original Lofesco template, which has been worked on by lots of lawyers and legislators and it has evolved over the years. So I think it's on its fourth revision now. And there is a lot of language in there that very expressly exempts towns from liability and it, so it, it's not something that a town is on the hook for. And that was one of the things Lebanon was very, very worried about. So the language in Lebanon's ordinance is very clear. And to get that ordinance copy, it is very easy to find right on the Lebanon, uh, town website.
I would just want to make sure that our town attorney looks at this thing and that if there's a footnote in there or a caveat, that states exactly what Jordan just said about the town is exempt from any exposure, this, that, and the other, and it's all on. I want to make sure if we're going to put anything in there and it takes up a half a page, it's that footnote.
Yep, we will. All right, thank you, Jordan. Thank you, Liz.
I was just gonna add a, a little tat, you know, to, towards the end of this.
Yeah, real quick.
Yep, the whole point in food sovereignty is to, really, it, it sort of almost brings us back to the way things were originally in the United States when we became, the United States of America, when we are supporting our community, its neighbors taking care of neighbors. Um, and so it's really, you know, me as a consumer, I have a responsibility of knowing what I'm buying and who I'm buying it from. And so, um, it's, it's about knowing your neighbor, knowing your farmer and using your good judgment as to whether or not you're gonna, you're make that purchase or consume that food. And so that's on me, that's my liability and the person that is producing the food. So the town is in no way, uh, responsible if.
Well, you're not, you're not a lawyer. You know what? I know you guys at Two Toed Farms and I like you guys a lot and I bought from you guys before, but, you know, there is legalese and that's why we're doing this right now. So I totally understand Liz, what you're saying. And I totally agree with that, but we just have to make sure this ordinance is nailed down tight, so, um, so there is no liability because, you know, that's the world that we live in, so unfortunately, but, um, you know, I appreciate that. Um, anything else, James, on this?
That's it for, for now. I think that's enough to work with.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Jordan. I appreciate you guys taking time out of your night to come on here and, uh, we'll probably have you back again.
How did the, how'd the Eric Norton Farmer's Market go? Last Sunday?
It, it went really well. It went really well. We were really pleased with the, the turnout. Um, and we're looking forward to our next market, which will be there again outdoors on the 13th. And Frank, I hope I see you at that one.
Well, we were tied up with something else, but the, the idea is I take this as a public service announcement opportunity when I'm on the planning board. I want the public to hear some of this stuff, so that's why I asked the question.
All right, thank you, Liz. Thank you, Jordan.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Have a great night and James, reach out.
Will do.
Yep, James, number two?
Already gone through, um, that in pretty good detail. The difference, definition of frontage, it's a long definition that includes definition of legal access, which, uh, goes on to conflict with 7.21. Really, this is not effectively changing anything significant. The only thing that's really adding is that it's clarifying. When it says drainage ditches and culverts shall be installed at all appropriate points. It doesn't say what, like, it, it doesn't say how in the ordinance. So it's, 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 um, further explained, and this is new language, as determined by the town of Burwick or a third party engineered, hired by the town at the applicant's expense. And also this other, this last sentence, access to lots. This, this refers to, um, a specific example. It's Rhythm, Rhythm Road being a dirt road. Um, we have standards, uh, dwelling unit standards that only apply to private roads. So this would prevent, I mean, it's unlimited development on our dirt, dirt roads. That's pretty much how it stands right now. Um, are there any, any que, questions on, on that number two? So the, to start out, the definition of frontage. Um, again, it's just, it just simplifies. Um, it really can be summed up by one sentence. It's actually, and then, yeah. And then, uh, number three is, is number three is really just taking paragraphs and putting it into a table. It's making it accessible to the, uh, the general Burwick citizen. And that's really part of our, of our work is, is making our, our ordinance more accessible to the public. So that's it for number three. Um, number four and five are that marijuana. We covered the, the setback and then marijuana testing facilities being exempted, exempted is the word. And Mike, um, I'll ask you how you think about, so the floor area for a home, home occupation, um, for the entire use being limited to 2,000 square feet and the cultivation area of being limited to 500 square feet.
Um, I think it's too small. Um, I honestly think that a cultivation area, if you have a licensing for 500 square feet of flowering, you should be able to utilize that. Um, if maybe, it's hard to, if, for cultivating, I can understand setting a, a limit of floor space to use. But if you're, let's say you have an old barn, a horse barn or something that you want to convert into a grow room. What, what's to say you can't use the whole thing for a dry room, for a processing room, for a bedroom, for moms, for clones? There's a lot of different things that, you know, 2,000 square feet might seem like a lot, but when you're really growing, it's not, um, especially like 500 square feet. If this was like per caregiver, I, I could see maybe the 2,000 square feet with the limited of 1,000 square feet of cultivation, because that way, that covers your moms, that covers your clones, your propagation, your veg. So if you have backups, um, which all of that is, is state approved, so I mean, at that point, it's.
Yeah, that's, I think if it just, if we just go with, uh, just get rid of the entire use limit. And then just having something for Jen and I, when we look at a floor plan, um, just to be able to have something that, that, that limits it, so we can start feeling comfortable going, we understand the scale.
I think the, the limiting factor would be the flowering rooms, um, which would be the 500 square foot per caregiver. So let's say like, an example is if a husband and wife wanted to be caregivers together and have, they, they each have their own licensing, they should each have their 500 square feet of flowering canopy if they pay for that license. You know, the state, you can have different size licenses. So it's like, if you wanted to have less, then you, you would be using less. But you're paying more for that license as well. So even if there was a town permit for it, then they could then charge more.
I just think that these are big, these are big rooms. I mean, 2,000 square feet.
It, it's not. If you want to talk about scale.
It's my 40, it's my 40 by 60 foot first floor in my barn.
That's tiny. That's really tiny.
But isn't this for caregivers? This, I mean.
You're talking about a small business, um, at a home. So are you going to cap a small business at making 35 to $50,000?
Yes, because it's not down on Route 4.
But if there's no, if there's no traffic, they're totally entitled to do it on their own.
It's not the point of it, Michael. That's not the point of it. No, is that the whole idea isn't to have 29 of these things or 400 of these things willingly all around?
If, if they, if they're licensed caregivers through the state, they should. You should be every, anywhere. Why, why are you trying to say that they shouldn't be?
And I asked, if it's licensed, who licenses them?
The state.
Okay, and how do we keep an inventory of those licenses? That was one of my questions way back when we started talking about this marijuana stuff. We have no, we have no mechanism to license people.
Yeah, but why, why, why?
I get people in my neighborhood that are closing their garages, okay? They're taking their garage doors off and they're closing them in. And I don't like that in my neighborhood, or anybody should have that in their neighborhood.
But as an individual, why do you have some, some, some say over whatever anyone does to their house?
Because it's marijuana. That's the only reason.
It doesn't make a difference. You have to think about it.
By the federal government. It's, it's, it's taking something that is so specialized and fairly new, and now trying to make it fit in every municipality in the state of Maine or whatever other state, 17 of them that have approved it. It's going too far. I would stick it in a, I would stick it in a 12 by eight shed.
That's not, that, you can't make a living off of that.
It's not the point to make a living.
Yes, it is. If people are doing this, they're doing it for a profession. I mean, why, why would they not do it?
Then I want to know about the home occupation, the issuance of certificate of occupancy and all of that stuff before I go down that road.
Yeah, that's too much. You're, you're trying, you're overstepping. That's just my opinion. You're, you're, you're overstepping. I mean, if someone was having an at-home business, you want to know exactly what they have, when they have it. You want approval from this? I mean, that's, this seems too, that's too much. We have their state restrictions and we should follow it. I mean, it's.
I, I was in college in the 60s, guys, all right? Just so that you know.
I'm going to turn it over to Jerry. He wanted to say something earlier.
I think the state law governs by only one caregiver per residence. So how can you have more than one in a resident?
You can have more as long as they both, as long as everyone is a legal resident of that house, you can have multiple caregivers operating. The only thing is, is to do that, you need to have separate areas of flowering and growing and everything has to be separate.
We, we consider multiple caregivers as a production facility.
Yes.
Locally.
At that level, especially when it's less than 1,000 feet from another production facility.
Yep. Well, that was a spirited discussion, I think, um, we can let the dust settle on that and I think we can.
Keep going.
We can, we can go on to, uh.
Can I just, uh, can I just ask one more question? Cause I was the one that raised the marijuana testing when the guy from Three Gs was in.
Yep.
And, and we, we've added some verbiage in there, but, I'm, I'm a big one to go to the land use table. Look at the district and look at the line item.
Frank, I know we're going with that.
That has been pigeonholed. Are we going to add that into the table?
It already has. You must be looking at an old ordinance version.
All I got was what I got them. I mean, okay, all I want is to make sure that there's a box on there that's got X's, 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 conditional use.
I got two, two big ones and the rest are minor. So this is the, uh, I'll go through the warehouse, um, storage and distribution. What, this is a total draft. This is a thought exercise to think about over the next month or so. What, what, the way forward to allow what Glenn and Zach were, were asking. You make, uh, warehousing, storage and distribution as a conditional use, and I, I say in R2 and R3 zone. You put an asterisk next to it, which, um, that, that sends them to the performance standards, in 8.27, which that restricts it to collector streets, so it's not on local streets. Uh, the next, next part would be, uh, restricting, prohibiting heavy, um, commercial vehicles. And that language comes directly from the home occupation standards. You could even further go and limit it to trips per day if we wanted to. Um, and that's, I mean, that's really, um, that's the, that's the extent of it for that one.
Uh, let me just say, I am very adamantly against having any type of wholesale warehousing, storage, anything in R2, R3. That does not belong out on Blackberry, Cranberry, Diamond Hill. Any of those connect, what do you call them?
Collector's street.
Collector's streets. Does not belong out there. That's farmland. I, I'm, I'm adamantly against that and I'll vote against the entire land use ordinance amendments because of that. I look at BlackBerry Hill Road. I drive down that road every day. I, that, that is not a warehouse road. So I'm against that. That's just me.
Yeah, I think it opens up stuff, especially on like Pine Hill Road.
We have, we have, we have our CI districts. We've got the CI district. That's what that's for. You know, if we start allowing 18-wheelers down there, uh, picking up, you know.
That's what, sorry to interrupt, but that's why the, the definition of heavy truck would prevent. It prevents the heavy truck.
That's farmland. BlackBerry Hill Road, Cranberry, Diamond Hill, that's all farmland. We're trying to attract people to farm in this town. That's farmland. That's rural. That's not industrial. That's farmland. That's rural. That's not industrial.
I would just say, I'll just say one thing and it's, it's becoming residential and that's a whole nother topic.
It's, it's becoming residential, but the way that I look at it, I will not support that amendment. That's just my, my standing on that.
All right.
Anybody else?
Oh yeah. Yeah. Can I offer something? I know somebody that spent a lot of effort to try to restore an old historical property. Um, it's in the R1. Matter of fact, what they just did was a barn. It used to be an old hay barn. And you know what? They can't store hay in it right now. They can't store grain or oats or pallets of wood pellets. Because it's in the R1 and warehousing is not allowed. No, they can put four apartment units in it. Which I don't think this group wants to do that. But they can't store automobiles that people take off the road in the winter. They can't store boats that people obviously need to put them under a cover if they don't want to shrink wrap them. As a matter of fact, this same property can't even, because you can't allow low impact industry in this zone. This property can't be turned into a pottery barn or a carpentry shop. Or anything along that line. It's just going to sit there. So anything that further restricts anything or opens it up elsewhere, I should say. Then we ought to be thinking about opening up everywhere. I agree with you, Dave. It's farmland. It should stay, it should stay farmland. I don't support this, but I also know this, this, this other person, people that own this thing, their hands are kind of tied. They don't know what the hell they're going to do with it.
Yeah. Yep. Thanks, Frank.
Oh, I can do marijuana. They can't even do marijuana in there.
David or Mike?
What's that?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Jerry. All right. Continue, James, please.
I just read the modification of impact fees. Uh, required impact fee may be modified in whole or in part by form of vote by the board of selectmen. If the board finds that one, the developer or property owner who would otherwise be responsible for the payment of the impact fee voluntarily agrees to make improvements for which the impact fee would be collected. Or an equivalent improvement, improvement approved by the review, reviewing authority. Or the developer or property owner is required as part of a development approval by the town or a state or federal agency to preserve open space or to make or to pay for improvements for which the impact fee would be collected or an equivalent improvement. Um, I actually, um, I recently made some improvements to the paragraph. I think it reads, kind of confusing. So I can just read how I have it. Um, so it goes B. Credit amounts shall be determined based on the plans, details and cost estimates for the proposed infrastructure improvements for which the credit is requested. Such plans, details and cost estimates shall be prepared by a licensed professional engineer and submitted at the time of the site plan subdivision or building permit application. The applicant should not pay for any third party reviews of the plan details or cost estimates. Then it specifies, this doesn't apply to subdivision, um, requirements of open space. This would require, this would be for, uh, site plan. Uh, but if someone was building a subdivision and they wanted to build a park, I think that's something that you're incentivizing someone to create a recreational facility. And they are not adding a burden onto a recreational facilities because they're creating something to offset that burden, that impact.
Okay.
Yep. Are there any questions on 15 points on that one?
You, you're going to ask people in order, Dave?
Go ahead, Frank.
I can wait and go last.
Go ahead, Frank.
You said you got this from Portland.
Yep.
I mean, I can understand why you might do something like this in a highly urban area where there isn't much downtown space readily available and where they offer up the ability to build a small park in a neighborhood on the, on the periphery of the town. It might serve four or five neighborhoods. I can understand that. But I don't think it's necessary in Burwick. And the reason I say it is because we haven't proven ourselves that we can even handle the impact fees that we have. I mean, I wouldn't ask the selectmen to negotiate anything at this point, okay, with any developer on doing anything. If we can't even resolve how we're spending the monies now. We are using impact fees for maintenance items to put up a, a privacy fence. For making connections to a utility or disconnections to utilities because we didn't have enough money in the budget to cap them off in the first place. We are misusing some of these things and I am on record with the selectmen and the town manager indicating that we need to do kind of a house cleaning keeping thing on this. And now realign this so that we are spending them on truly what impacts are for open space and recreation. So before I would support anything to give the selectmen any more authority, was something I don't think we need in our town. I won't support this one. And I think we need to have a workshop session with the board of selectmen, the planning board and the code officer who's responsible for collecting these things. And truly figure out where we're going. We've been collecting them for four years now. And the only thing we've spent them on have been miss expenditures on maintenance items.
All right. No taking Frank. You know what? And we actually have to have a workshop with them anyway to discuss the, um, moratorium on marijuana permits as well, because they put the, um, the caveat that we would be back to them every year to discuss.
Right.
So we need to schedule a workshop with them. Can we do that for February?
Yeah, we've got a light schedule through the winter. Perfect time to start getting some of these things.
February. All right. Go ahead, James.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Can I, can I interrupt? Um, if it's too late in February, I'll be out for a month. Just let everybody know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Out of my control. Sorry.
Uh, number nine is just striking person, uh, persons defined earlier in the land use ordinance has seen no reason to define it again. Number 10 is just adding rather from AWEL, Nicole pointed out, it should be ANYWEL. And then number 11, uh, it, it, it takes away the specia, um, specifying the type of screen. It's, it says a six foot screen of a wooden or masonry and there's, there's other different types of screens. Um, so that's, it's stricken. And then there's a, um, a 50 foot landscape buffer shall be provided along all property boundaries. Nicole brought up is that 50 foot wide and 50 foot long. Uh, that actually came from our template ordinance 30 years ago. And I don't have no idea what the basis is of that. But also for any apartment, that's going to be taken up through subdivision. So any buffering or screening can be taken care of at that point. So we don't need that line. And I just want to say, um, this was a lot thrown at you guys. Um, definitely pushing the envelope on, on, on changes. So I appreciate the discussions and, and.
No, but you know what? You threw this at, uh, I'm, I'm, you know, James, I'll give you a compliment. You're very far ahead of the ball here on this and you threw this at us way ahead of time. And we have a couple contentious things that we have to work out. I'd like to talk to the selectmen because we have to anyway, because they asked us to come to them about the whole marijuana thing. Um, but I know that, you know, Frank and, and Mike and, you know, and a couple of other people had some issues with some of the other language on here. I think that, you know, we have something on the 16th, which is big. So we shouldn't be talking about this that night.
Right.
But then, you know, moving in, yeah, moving into, um, you know, January, I think that we can definitely, you know, kind of iron these things out. Could you please, you know, work some type of schedule out that we can get with the selectmen in February and have this joint workshop?
Absolutely. Yep.
And ahead of time, I would like, I would like to get a consensus from the board when we go into that meeting, whether or not we think that the requirements that we have. Kind of capping the whole, you know, different type of marijuana is something that we should stick with. Going into, you know, 2021, 2022. So we can kind of talk about that as well, but no, good job, James. I think it's good.
Can I just ask a couple of questions on the apartment building and multifamily development piece? Uh, it sort of concerns me about the outdoor storage area and it not being specific as far as what's hiding containing that. I, I just can see, you know, somebody parking a U-Haul and calling that a, 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 a screen.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I, you could probably rather maybe just say wooden masonry or, um, what's the other word though?
Well, if it's storage shed, it's got to go through the, uh, it's got to go through Jennifer.
It's a, it's the screen, the, um, the trash.
I mean, we can look at the property, uh, at the corner of school street. And that dumpster has been sitting out there for six years like that. There's another property out on Pine Hill that it's, the dumpster is sitting at the end of the driveway.
Right.
No screening whatsoever.
Yeah. Those, and just to know those, Jen and I have been working on, uh, that dumpster for a while where it's, you can talk about it later, but it's, uh.
Yep. I know what you mean. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I want to thank whoever muted me when my phone in my office here rang. So thank you, whoever did that.
Uh, that, that was your wife, Linda, who did that. I know she's in the room with you right now. She's like pulling the, pulling the strings.
You want us to dance?
Frank, you see that? Now, this is a great conversation. Absolutely. Great conversation. And I feel really good about being way far in advance on this. Thank you, James. Um, if nobody sees anything else that they want to talk about for these land use ordinance amendments. Uh, we can move on to the next portion, which is public comment. Do you have anybody in the waiting room?
No.
Okay. There's nobody in the audience here. Uh, any informational items? Um, I have one question. So I saw the PD posted and I know that the Riddlin Road Bridge was red listed. I know Diamond Hill is kind of red listed too. That's going to be one of probably the first bridge to be worked on. But when is, is, I saw the post, it said, um, until further notice, is, is the town and the state going to be repairing that bridge by next spring?
I, I think until further noted, I believe, I don't know. Let me, let me check. Let me get back to you.
So I wanted, I was going to email Steve and I was going to email Tom. I know that Diamond Hill is another red listed bridge. And that gets more traffic than, than, uh, Riddlin Road, but just kind of concerned about that. Cause I know a lot of people use that, especially in the spring and summer, getting down to Hatfields.
Well, I think we need to add that also as a, an item to talk to the selectmen as well, Dave. Based on the discussion Jennifer and James and I had about what the potential is out there on Riddlin Road. And the idea that to go ahead and spend a lot of money on a road that the town doesn't even maintain year round needs, to me, needs to drive a conversation as to what are we going to do with Riddlin Road? Are we going to actually bring that up to grade, pave it all the way through and make it a year round road? We need to talk to the stakeholders out there. You got to bring in the large property owners like Tuckahoe turf. I mean, they may not be harvesting turf for 40 years, but in year 41, they may be wanting to put some kind of a project out there on that, on that large vast of land they have. So it really drives a discussion with not only the selectmen and the planning board as to what Riddlin Road and Riddlin Road Bridge should be. But it also should drive a discussion that we should have with the two or three major stakeholders out there that own umpteen acres of land. And we ought to get ahead of the curve. And look at this thing in a more proactive way so that 10 years out, we have got the right infrastructure to support what might be the right endeavor. They have every right to come in there and put in uh, four acre, uh, you know, 120,000 square foot lots all over that sod farm. They have every right to do that if they decide to close the sod farm down, you know, so need to be ahead of it and have those.
Frank, I agree with you too. I am as, you know, for right now, I'm looking at that, you know, a lot of people use that, um, access. I know I do to get out to that 2.2 acres that the town of Burwick owns, that beach there to access Hatfields. And that's a huge, you know, a lot of people in this town use that as recreation. And to have to go all the way around, I'm just kind of curious about that. But you know, you're right. Maybe Tuckahoe someday says, we're done. And the same thing with, uh, what is it? Ace Acres, Acer Acres?
Yep.
Yeah. You know, it could be the same thing. And how much, how much money the town sinks into that? And I know that that's a private road pass there. So, um, I just wanted to bring that up. I'll, I'll email Steve and Tom. And I'm, I'm just kind of curious about that. Cause like I said, there's two reasons. I know a lot of people use that as recreation in Burwick and I use that road a lot myself. And to have to go all the way around to K Road, it's going to be a long way around to get to Hatfields, but it's, it's, I think it's very important to this town to have that bridge. And I'm just kind of curious. And also to know about the Diamond Hill Bridge. Cause I know that's, that's red listed too. That's been dropped down to five tons. So I'm just kind of curious about that too. So that's all that I have. Anybody else? Jerry, you got anything for the board? Frank?
Yeah, I do. Um, I think what we ought to do, I dropped, Dave, I dropped you and Nicole an email. Because I just think before snow flies, everybody on the planning board ought to go out to the new police fire safety complex.
And Frank, I meant to, I meant to reply to you and, you know, to, to, you know, to talk about Frank's, uh, email there. I think that maybe, is there some way that we can get like a workshop ahead of a planning board being that we can go out there and just take a tour of that facility? I know they didn't have a grand opening and an open house, but can we go out there and look at it? Not from like, we're going to be out there with a notepad, you know, and, and jotting notes down, say, you know, you didn't do this. But I think that we deserve to be able to go out there.
Absolutely.
Because I mean, we were, we, we were interested in, in that public access through, through there. Now's the prime opportunity to look at it because there were a lot of opportunities to make that happen. That area that was supposedly wet, this, that, and the other is bone dry. True, we've come off a drought. But the way they've channelized the flow out there, a lot of it could be well contained within the framework of that channelization. And allow opportunities for a pedestrian bridge to go through there over to Sullivan Street. And, uh, and a few other things.
You set that up with chief plant? Okay. Anything else, Frank?
Um, yeah, there was something else, but I, I got, you know how I get into detail. I got carried away. Ask father, it'll come back to me.
To that thought, Frank, if you think about it, we'll come back to you, David.
I'm good. Thank you.
Michael?
I'm good.
James?
Great Falls Construction will be doing their, um, will possibly their last, um, update session in, outside of planning board. Uh, December 15th. And then they're, um, they're actually going, they're aiming for, and I think they're ahead of their day. They're, they're putting all their effort into hitting December 10th to submit materials for planning board. And at that point they'll be available on the town website. And they're going to be in for a sketch level for their site plan, uh, December 17th.
Okay. Jennifer? Frank going once, going twice?
I do have it. Um, I know we don't have a, this might not be necessarily a planning board thing, but it stems from the work of the downtown vision committee. We're not having a Christmas parade this year. But that doesn't mean we can't put a tree up, up front. I see the public works have already gone around and put all the decorations on this, that and the other. But we need to have public works put a tree in there. And we get a small hand group of boy scouts or something to decorate it. I don't want to miss a year.
I'll be there. Frank, I'll be there with you again this year.
I, I'm there with you.
And Dennis, let's call Dennis.
Good.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Frank, on behalf of a member of the rec commission, I can tell you that there is a Christmas tree going up. It was donated from a local farm here in Burwick. Um, it is in the works to, um, be placed there this year. So no worries on that.
I am very glad to hear that.
And on, on another note, I do have one more thing for Frank. I'm going to be sending you over an updated spreadsheet. Take a look at it and let me know what you think.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Next on the agenda is the adjournment. The adjournment's next.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Jerry to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, gentlemen and ladies, or lady. Okay. Thanks, gentlemen and ladies, or lady. Have a good.
Have a good night, guys.